All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Would you please rise for the President of the Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we please have roll call?
Of course. Councilmember Shaker.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Cafferty.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Vice Mayor Grineal.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Yep.
And our town attorney is present.
Introduction, presentations, and proclamations. We have a presentation and discussion from Dan Jackson with Wild Land, Wild Dan, excuse me, Financial Services regarding the Town's Water and Wastewater Rate Study. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dan Jackson, Vice President of Wild Dan Financial Services. I have had the privilege of being the Town of Chino Valley's Water and Wastewater Consultant for almost 20 years now. I very much appreciate the confidence that the Town has always shown in me and in the studies that we've done. And I'm here tonight to give you a summary presentation on the results of our latest water and wastewater rate study. I've got a relatively short PowerPoint presentation I'm going to go through where I'm going to summarize both your costs and your usage, and then I'm gonna present to you a couple of different rate plan alternatives for the Town to consider. But it's important to understand that this is a very difficult topic to discuss. It's very difficult for all cities to discuss because of the fact that water and wastewater rates across the country are increasing. I always like to start out my presentations by going through just what's happening in the industry itself, because that's very, it's important for decision makers like yourselves to understand the dynamics that are at play in the water industry, not only here in the state of Arizona, but also all across the United States. Water costs are going up. They're going up for everybody, all over the nation. The average utility has been increasing its rates by five to six percent every year, and that trend is expected to continue. As a matter of fact, the American Water Works Association, which is generally the most prestigious water organization in the world, has stated that they believe that water and sewer rates across the country are going to triple in the next 15 years. Now, why is that happening? There's a couple of very obvious reasons for that. We have seven billion people on the planet today. We had one billion people a hundred years ago, but we've got the exact same amount of fresh water. So, as water resources become more strained, it becomes more costly to develop those water resources and ensure that everybody has adequate water supplies. At the same time, many of the other factors that are driving up costs are beyond the control of a utility like yourselves. You try to run your water operation like a business. You want the revenues from your rates to cover all the costs of providing that service. And like any business, your costs are gonna go up over time. Heck, the cost of everything goes up three to four percent a year just due to inflation. And then when you look at many of the other aspects of the water business, things like chemicals, electricity, insurance, workers' comp, all of those are going up at rates higher than inflation. And then finally, there's another critical factor, and that is that it costs millions of dollars to build a water system to push water through a town to its ultimate end user. People have become used to the idea of getting up in the middle of the night and turning that tap and having water come out of it. It's one of the privileges of life in the 21st century. But you know what? It costs a lot of money to ensure that that happens. And like any asset, they wear out over time. We all want our water rates to be as low as possible. That is the goal of every utility. But the well, the properly-run utility has to balance the desire to keep rates as low as possible with the need to invest in your system to ensure that you have an exceptional quality of service. I work for a lot of cities that have incredibly low rates, but they have low rates because their system is quite literally falling apart, and they are this far away from a catastrophic failure. Is that a better way to run a system, just so you can say your water rates are lower? Not necessarily. And so the decisions that you make as a council with regards to how you invest in your system is gonna have a big impact on ultimately what your water rates are going to be. But also keep this in mind. The investment that you make in the city is an investment that is in the future of the Town of Chino Valley. All of the investment goes right directly into the streets and alleyways of this city. And so that the assets that you build are going to be in use 20, 30, 40, 50 years from now. And so while it's never easy to ask ratepayers to pay more, what they're really doing is investing in the future of the city. Now, one final thing. People love to compare water rates between different communities, and we're actually gonna do that in a minute. But keep this in mind. Thirty to forty percent of utilities in the United States charge rates that don't cover their costs. What that means is that they're using their general fund to subsidize their water fund. You don't do that here in the town. And so that, what, I mean, it's not illegal to do that, but it's not necessarily good financial policy. You see, every dollar that is spent subsidizing water costs is a dollar that is not spent for other critical city services. So that's another thing that's very important to keep in mind. Okay, we've talked a little bit about the industry itself. Well, let's talk about the Town of Chino Valley. In the Town, in 2013, we did a rate study, and we recommended a five-year rate plan. It was adopted by the council. But like any prudent rate plan, you always, you always review it after a couple of years. It was reviewed in 2015, and it was determined that the wastewater rate adjustments that were recommended for 2016 and 2017 weren't necessary to be implemented. In 2018, another five-year rate plan was implemented, and it actually included reductions in some of your rates. That's something I can tell you as a rate consultant is very uncommon, that you were able to reduce primarily your wastewater rates. You've reduced them by about, if I recall correctly, about $10 a month. Like I said, that's something that just is not done very often. Then in 2021, you decreased the rates again. And so you've had a situation where your rates have actually gone down in recent years, as opposed to many other communities whose rates have gone up. So, that has shown that you have always been very diligent in trying to ensure that any cost savings and any expenses that come in under budget are passed through to your ultimate ratepayers. Okay, and this chart right here is just a background of what your current water and sewer rates are. Like, like most utilities, you charge a monthly charge and a volumetric rate for both water and, for water service. For a, for a five-eighth inch meter or a three-quarter inch meter, which is what a typical meter for a residential customer, right now that customer pays $6.50 a month as a base charge. They then pay a volumetric charge based on the amount of water that they use. The volume rate is what's known as an inverted block. The more you use, the more you pay. The idea behind this rate is to encourage conservation by ensuring that people use water in the most discretionary fashion possible. But at the same time, your, your, your block rates don't go into effect until people get into a usage that is above the average. The average user here in the Town only uses about 5,000 to 6,000 gallons of water service a month. Your first block is 8,000 gallons. So, people, only people using above-average water usage pay the higher rates under this rate plan. On the wastewater side, you pay a monthly base charge for residential customers of $58. And then commercial customers pay a base charge and, as well, and multifamily customers pay a fixture unit rate and a rate per EDU. Okay, what does that mean in terms of what people pay? Well, this chart right here is one of these famous rate comparisons that I always like to give. This chart shows a comparison of water and sewer rates for the Town of Chino Valley with other towns here in this section of the state of Arizona. As you can see, a customer who uses 5,000 gallons of water and wastewater service a month in the Town of Chino Valley pays about $91 a month for that service. Now, that's just basic water and wastewater service. It doesn't include garbage, or stormwater, or taxes, or anything like that. It's just a basic charge for water and sewer service. The green portion of the bar is wastewater, and the, and the blue portion is water. So as you can see, you pay $91. How does that compare? Well, you're about where you would expect to be. You're higher than some, you're lower than others. You're a little higher than Prescott Valley, but Prescott Valley is right now examining a, a significant set of rate increases over the next several years. They're probably going to have to do a series of rate adjustments. Like all cities, they're in that same position as well. You're about $10 above the state average. Now, look, Arizona's a big state. There's a lot of different sections of the state, and one thing that is very important to understand is that water is more expensive in this part of the state. It's more scarce, it's harder to mine, it's harder to develop, and so it's gonna be a little bit more costly. And that's shown by towns like Cottonwood, Jerome, Prescott, Sedona, all of whom have rates, monthly charges, that are higher than yours. So, like I said, you're about where you would expect to be, higher than some, lower than others. But your rates are certainly not out of proportion to what residents in this part of the state of Arizona pay for water and sewer service. Okay, let's, just quick background on the system. You have about, you have just a little less than 1,000 water customers and about 2,300 wastewater customers. It's a little unusual here in that you have several private water companies, as Mr. Holmes indicated in his presentation earlier. You have several private water companies that provide water service here. That's a little unusual. It means that you've actually got more existing wastewater customers than you have water customers. To no great surprise, the vast majority of them are residential. Okay. What we've done in our study is we've done a 10-year forecast. We have taken your expenses and your revenues for the current year, and we forecasted it out for a 10-year period. Now, a forecast is not a guarantee. A forecast is a prediction based on a series of reasonable assumptions. One of the key assumptions that we used in our forecast was the expectations of future growth. And we're anticipating a very modest amount of growth here in the Town over the next decade. This chart right here shows that we're forecasting about maybe 50 or so new accounts per year. That could change, that could change very radically, but at this point in time, we're taking the conservative approach and assuming just a fairly limited amount of water growth. This is your water bill consumption. As you can see, you've had a pretty significant increase in usage over the last few years. In the current year, you, residents of the state, of the, of the Town of Chino Valley consumed about 118 million gallons of water service. That number is a little higher than it was in prior years, and it's expected to continue to climb modestly in the next several years. On the wastewater side, we're also projecting very limited growth. You have about 2,400 customers today. We're expecting that's gonna hit maybe 2,900 10 years from now. So, growth is a component of this plan, but it is not, it's not a real significant component of this plan. Okay, let's now talk about your fund, both your existing costs and your future costs. I'll start out by saying that right now, your water and sewer fund is actually, is in okay shape. That's not true for a lot of utilities. Your revenues are basically covering their costs right now. But the thing is, with cost increases the way they are, a fund that's covering its costs today will not cover its costs tomorrow if you don't keep ahead of this. In addition, your fund right now is heavily dependent on a couple of the components of revenues. One is your existing hookup fees. Another thing is a general fund transfer for capital improvement projects that the general fund has been supporting in recent years. And so those two funds, we're, we've developed a financial plan that will enable you to not be dependent on those, because you are, hookup fees depend on new growth. If new growth stops, you don't get the hookup fees. And if you don't get the hookup fees, your fund could fall into deficit very quickly. So we're gonna recommend a plan that ensures that your water and sewer fund stays solvent for the next five years, even under a worst-case scenario. So, what are the key assumptions that we used? Well, look, you try to run your operation like a business. Water is a product, like, it's like a McDonald's hamburger or a gallon of gasoline or anything else. No, you run a business, you, you produce that product, and you sell that product to your customers. Well, like any business, you're susceptible to inflation. So, a, a, a well-designed forecast has to assume the fact that due to inflation, that is going, your costs are gonna go up a little bit. Well, inflation's been a little higher in the last couple of years than it has been in, in, in prior years. That affects all aspects of life. It affects your grocery, our grocery bills, also affects our water. Because as the cost of providing water service gets pushed up due to inflation, you have to pass those costs through to your ultimate ratepayer. And like I said, you try to run a business, but one of the advantages you have as a business is you're not in this to make a profit. You're just in this to cover your costs. So, we're also taking into consideration the fact that certain expenses like chemicals and insurance are gonna continue to increase at higher rates. We're also, like I said earlier, we're continuing to assume that buy-in fees are gonna be a component. And we're also assuming that you are going to phase out that general fund CIP support to your capital improvement plan. And we are going to assume that you are gonna continue to aggressively fund capital improvements to ensure a good quality of service. This chart right here shows that the Town is forecast to invest about $18.8 million in its water and sewer system in the next decade. It shows it year by year. Now, capital improvement plans affect rates in three ways. How much do you have to spend? When do you have to spend it? And how do you finance it? Well, the first question is how much you have to spend? $18 million. It's a pretty large amount of money. But you know what? These systems are expensive, and replacement and overhauling and expansion is expensive as well. Secondly, if you look at this chart, you see that the lion's share of the expenditures is gonna be in the next five years. So that means that you have to have rates in place that enable you to issue debt to cover all of these expenditures. And that means that the, the increases have to come a little bit earlier to ensure that you will have enough revenue to pay your debt service. And third, unfortunately, it's a little bit more expensive to borrow money today than it used to be. Not a whole lot more expensive, but a little bit more expensive. So, every 100 basis points, those interest rates go up. You know, they affect our home mortgages, and they affect our water rates, too. This right here is an anticipation of the amount of debt that the city will have to issue in order to fund this $18 million as in capital improvements. To no great surprise, you don't have $18 million in the bank. You gotta go out and borrow it. So, we're projecting that in 2024, the Town's gonna have to borrow about $1 million. And in 2025, you'll have to borrow about $7.2 million in order to fund these capital improvements. And then every couple of years, you're gonna have to borrow a little bit more as these capital improvement plans get funded. Now, the thing is, your building assets are gonna be in place for 40, 50, 60 years. So obviously, you're gonna fund it with debt over 20 to 30 years. That way, that ensures that ratepayers today and ratepayers tomorrow help pay for the cost of these long-term capital improvements. And that's exactly what this plan does. This chart right here shows your total budget for the year. For fiscal year 2024, it's costing you about $2.5 million to run your water and sewer system. On the water side, the vast majority of it is operating expenses. On the wastewater side, a little bit more of it is debt, which is, again, not uncommon because wastewater costs have gone up pretty significantly in the last decade. Now, this chart right here shows your forecast increase in the water utility cost of service over the next decade. What's interesting about this chart is that it is broken down into the components of costs. The blue portion of every bar chart is your operating costs, as you expect, goes up a little bit every year. Inflation, all that other stuff I talked about. But look at the green portion. The green portion is your debt service. As you borrow more money, it's gonna push your costs up. So, investment costs money, and it results in the need to have a higher cost of service and a higher rate in order to cover that. Now, on the wastewater side, what's interesting about this chart is that it shows your, well, your operating costs going up, but your debt service is actually staying pretty steady. That's because some of your existing debt is gonna roll off in the next few years. So, some of the debt rolls off, you replace it with new debt, and that's gonna minimize the impact on your ratepayers. But unfortunately, the bottom line is that costs are still gonna be trending up over the next 10 years. Okay, so we know our costs are going up. What do we do about it? This is our recommendation that the Town consider. We recommend that the Town consider implementing a new three-year rate plan with, with rate adjustments effective in January of 2024, January 2025, and January of 2026. We recommend no change in the rate structure itself, but we do recommend the, the implementation of a new water resource fee. We're gonna recommend very modest percentage increases in the base charge and the volume charge for water and sewer. Now, I'm gonna present you two scenarios. This is the first scenario, which is just what I call the status quo scenario. As you can, I'm first gonna show you the rates themselves, then I'll show you the more important chart, which is the impact on an average monthly bill. As you can see right here, we recommend the following. On the water side, we recommend taking your base charge from $6.50 for your three-quarter inch meters, and you know, 90% of your meters are three-quarter inch, from $6.50 to $6.70 in 2024, to $6.90 in 2025, and $7.10 in 2026, so 20 cents a month each year. We recommend very nominal increases in the volumetric charge. However, we also recommend that you implement what we call a water resource fee. Mr. Holmes may wanna talk about this a little bit also at some point. But a water resource fee would be used to help the Town develop and invest in new water resources. On the wastewater side, we recommend taking your residential charge from $58 a month currently to $59.74 effective January of 2024, so about $1.75. And then about a similar increase in 2025, and a similar increase in 2026. Now, what does this mean in terms of increases? Well, again, like I said, the average ratepayer here in the Town uses about 4,000 to 5,000 gallons a month of water and sewer service. So if you're a 4,000-gallon user, right now you pay $85.70. Under this plan, your monthly bill would go up by $4.57 in the first year. That's about a 5% increase. In the second year, it would go up by $2.71 a month. And then the third year, it would go up by $2.79 a month. Now, the higher increase in the first year is because of the imposition of that water resource fee. But after that's implemented, then the increases are more modest. If you're a 5,000-gallon user, be about the same impact. Obviously, if you use more water than that, you're going to pay a little bit higher bill. Now, I hate to take these very complex financial models and calculations and studies and try to, I hate to try to summarize it in terms of one or two numbers, but if I did, I would tell you that the vast majority of ratepayers would see a monthly increase of somewhere around $4 to $5 a month in the first year, and somewhere around $2 to $3 a month in year two and in year three. Obviously, because if the average usage is 4,000 to 5,000 gallons, that means about 70 to 75% of monthly bills are gonna be 5,000 gallons or less. Are there people who use more than 5,000 gallons? Of course there are. But they are, but they are only a fairly limited number of customers. So, that's the impact of the base scenario. Now, one thing to remember, to keep in mind, is that a significant portion of the cost of this rate study that was done was actually funded by a grant. And one of the objectives of the grant was to look at potential conservation measures that the Town could employ in order to further encourage the prudent use of water. And so for that reason, we've developed a second scenario for you to evaluate. A second scenario adds another conservation block to the rate design to further encourage water conservation. Right now, your three blocks are 0 to 8,000 gallons, 8 to 20,000 gallons, and then 20,000 gallons and above. Under this plan, your block would be 0 to 8 would be unchanged. Then you would have a second block from 8 to 15, and then a third block from 15 to 20, and a fourth block above 20. What this essentially does is, it doesn't impact your low-volume users. As you're about to see, they'll pay the same under either scenario. But your higher-volume users would see an additional disincentive for greater amounts of usage. Now, here's the deal. You could, you can, you can put out all the flyers in the world encouraging people to not waste this precious and diminishing resource, water. But what really benefits is when you provide a financial disincentive for people to use greater amounts. We economists have an old saying, "If you raise the price of something, you get less of it." And so for that reason, putting in an additional conservation block rate will help encourage additional conservation. So as you can see, under this plan, right now, on the volume charge, there's no change in the wastewater rates. That's, that's the same. And there's no change in the water base charges. That's the same. But on the volume block, as you can see, under the current, under the current plan, it goes from 5.30 to 6.63 between 8 and 20,000 gallons. But under this plan, it would go to 6.83 for 8 to 15,000 gallons, and 8.54 for 15 to 20,000 gallons. And then a higher rate of $11.10 for above 20,000 gallons. So what's the impact? Well, this right here compares what would happen under the two scenarios, okay? Under the, as you can see, if you use 10,000 gallons or less, you pay the same under either scenario, because it doesn't impact you. It's only the higher-volume users that, the 20,000 and the 30,000-gallon users, that would pay more under the second scenario. So, both of these scenarios will get you the revenue that you need. I'm not recommending either of them. I'm just presenting this here for your, for your purpose. And, and I'd like Mr. Holmes to come up and just give a couple of comments real briefly about conservation, the grant, and the objective in order to preserve resources.
Mayor, members of the council, appreciate the presentation. So, this grant was awarded, there was only two grants given out in Arizona. We were one of the two recipients of Bureau of Recreation Water Smart Grant. It was entitled Water Demand Rate Study. The goal of this grant was obviously help offset the costs of doing this rate analysis, but it really was focused on, did the development of these rate concepts to change these tiers where it would not impact what we use inside our home, but look at that larger volume of water that we use outdoors. And the goal was to try and have a reduction in the outdoor water use, which is averaging around 60% most utilities in northern Arizona, outdoor water use. If we can clip that down a little bit, try and conserve and leave some of that water in the ground where, where we can try and better manage the aqua. So, that was the purpose of the grant. It was trying to manage, and it was very conservative numbers that we tried to look at for water savings over the course of this, this rate study and implementing going forward. So, just wanted to bring it to your attention. This was funded through the grant, and we hope that, I would say I'd recommend considering this for hopefully a better conservation effort.
Thank you. Well, let me just wrap my presentation up by saying the following. Look, there's a lot that goes into making a decision. A rate decision is a financial decision, but it's also a social and community decision as well. You design rate plans in order to meet certain objectives. Conservation is one of those very key objectives. It's never easy to ask ratepayers to pay more. Nobody wants to pay more for anything at any time for any reason. But, simple fact of life is that your costs are going up. And you need to find a way to recover those costs without putting your utility in financial jeopardy. Either of the rate plans you adopt here will do that. The rate adjustments we're talking about are between 2 and 3% a year. The average utility is raising its rates 5 to 6% a year. And so, your increases, while they are unfortunate, are less than what many other utilities are going to, are going to face. So, you'd be happy to know I'm on my last chart now. So, what happens, what happens next? Well, the state of Arizona has, has a, regulations in place, a state law called ARS 9511 that governs how rate adjustments are put in place. What happens is as follows. The council would have to adopt what's known as a notice of intent, a, to adjust water and wastewater rates. Adopting a notice of intent does not obligate you to increase rates. It just says, "We're gonna start a statutory clock, and we're gonna think about it." So you adopt a notice of intent, then 60 days later, you have to have a public hearing where you get to invite me back to have me tell you this all over again. So I know you can't wait for that. And after, at a public hearing, you then solicit input from the, from the citizens as to their attitude towards the rate plan. After the public hearing, you then can vote to adopt the rate plan if you so choose. You can adopt a three-year plan. You can adopt a one-year plan. You can tell me to go back to Texas if you want. But, the bottom line is, after you adopt a rate plan, it would go into effect 30 days later. So that's the state law. I really appreciate your allowing me to prattle on as long as I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have this time. Questions over here? How about over here? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Not covered at all.
All right. Next, we have Call the Public.
Call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is that the discretion of the council are not required by law. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. Yielding of time will not be permitted. The total time for Call of the Public may be up to 30 minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. Disrespectful behavior will not be tolerated. This includes loud outbursts, profanity, and disruptive discussions among our audience. I do have a few submitted cards.
Okay, before we get started here, I know a lot of you are here about the mine tonight, and we don't mind hearing you, but we only have about 30 minutes for this. So we're gonna let some of you up. And please, if you could come up with new items, we don't wanna hear the same thing over and over and over. Okay?
First one I have is Larry Holt. Yes, a Chino Valley resident.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman-
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members, town manager, town staff. Um, I'm not going to talk about the mine. And I'll be a lot shorter than last presentation. Um, I want to talk about territorial days. If I ever could put a three-day event down as an absolute success, this was it. And it was all thanks to town staff. As you know, I work on a lot of things with the town, and I have my fingers in a lot of different places. But I want to specifically call out the people from community services, facilities, the old parks and rec as I knew them, um, roads, and the PD. Because these guys were everywhere we asked, did everything we needed. And the event that we put on Sunday, I have not had one piece of bad feedback from it. Um, we had an event yesterday, as you all know, because you were all there. Again, everything went off smoothly because of these people. And I was always brought up praising public, I want to praise those staff. I'm sorry not more of them here tonight. But I want to thank them all and thank you guys for bringing such a good group of people together. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Next is Al Whitick.
I'd like to talk a little bit about water.
I'm sorry, sir, but if you please speak in the microphone so people at home can hear you.
I'd like to talk a little bit about water and the mine. I know that's a bad subject, but they say they have a ten gallon a minute well. And they want to run twenty-four hours. You realize how much water that is? You realize from, uh, I forgot the name of the place. Um, Birdie Springs, Del Rio is dry. I understand from Birdie Springs to Perkinsville is almost dry. Del Rio feeds us. Um, already we have shallow wells in Williamson Valley. And if this rate continues just with our uses as citizens here, uh, we're going to be in dire straits. I don't know what you can do about it. I hope you can just tell the people to, like the other gentleman asked, to conserve a bit, but we're going dry. I thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, I should have noted, Mr. Whitick was a, is a town resident. Next up is Rayanne Myers, not a town resident.
Mayor and council members and vice mayor. I'm not living currently in the Cedar Heights area, but I was. I used to live across, directly across the street from the end of Mary's Mesa. I currently live now on the other side, which is the south side of Mary's Mesa, um, Selvins Butte and Saddleback Butte. Cedar Heights area will not be the only ones affected by the mine. It will also be the area that I'm in that will also be affected. We also share the aquifer of water underneath. Most of us have our own wells. The wildlife that is in our area is mule deer, lots of them. I get them in my backyard every single day. And also our wonderful pronghorn that you have on your seal, they are in my backyard. Please don't let these guys do this. I also have a medical issue. I have allergy-induced asthma. The dust from this mine will cause a huge issue. Um, it's very sensitive. And please reconsider them, please. So I'm going to go back to my chair now.
Next submitted card I have was from Charles Turner, not sure. Okay, so we're going to move on to Kelly Jo, who, um, lists that she is a resident, but also lists Cedar Heights.
So I live, I could spit on these people. On these people that are coming in to excavate and blast and everything else, literally, I am that close. And there's probably a handful of other people that could do that. You know, the noise, nothing of that bothers me. But the toxins, the things that are going into our, you know, our grounds and maybe our water, that, that concerns me. Um, I don't know. I mean, you know, if these guys want to come in, fine, bring them in. Let them do these rocks by hand. Let's just do a, you know, I don't know. I think that, um, at this point, this is not the greatest way to go. And I, myself, they totally ruined all of our real estate, all of it. We, we had property that was probably worth some money at one point. It's worth nothing now when they come in, nothing. Um, geez, Chuck. Um, it, it scares me. I mean, it really scares me. I mean, I'm from Pennsylvania, I'm not a, you know, I'm not an Arizona native, but I don't want me or my relatives in my family to be, oh, the toxins, the toxins. Oh, so we have the toxins now. And, you know, jeez Christ, I'm already, I'm already halfway to hell. So I, you know, I don't need any more help. I, and I'm right there, I mean, I'm right there. I could talk to these people. I could literally walk a hundred feet and talk to these people. And you can bet your ass I'm going to talk to these people.
Next I have, I think it's Lori Higgins, maybe Larnie, Lauren, thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council members, thank you for receiving me today. Um, I am also talking about the Cedar Heights area, I am a resident. But I would like to let you all know, and as Annie Perkins was at the meeting in Paulden, so I'm sure you have a, an understanding what's going on. I'm sure you caught wind of it. But it just doesn't affect us. It's going to affect the town of Chino. So ADQ and, um, ADOT did a study, and I don't know if you guys are familiar with it. So that study was to bring the arrogate closer to the towns. It could be you guys, not just us, it could be you. And the idea of the study was extensive. It was done with Arizona and California. The idea is to bring it close to town so we don't use the diesel fuel, the extents just on driving, the metric ton of each truck on the roadways. ADOT did a very, very, and I'll give you some of the information if you would like afterwards, be happy to give it to you. So this has been a study that's been going on for a very long time. Just didn't hap up, just didn't pop up. The thing that's confusing, why twenty-three acres? When really California and ADOT are looking for like a hundred acres plus. What the arrogate does, as we grow, yourself, the county, we need that. I'm not saying we don't, we do need it. But our question is, is it going to affect Chino as well? If it's going to affect us, I'm not sure of all the boundary lines, but some of those hills do belong to you all as well. So if it could happen to a small little community in Cedar Heights, it could happen to you guys as well. So all's I'm asking you for is the consideration to look at it. Just to kind of look at it, it's in your backyard and could have happened to Chino. So thank you very much for your time.
Next I have, I think it's Janice Shanks, not a resident.
Thank you. Mayor and council and guests. Many people behind me represent the place where I live, and that is forty-eight ninety North Joshua Way, which is right off of Cedar Heights in eye shot of the proposed reclamation. There's no mention of a mine, just a reclamation proposal, which pretty much means to us that they will scar the mountain that is right adjacent to our neighborhood. I have a very wonderful, um, proposed little three-minute speech about water. I'm not going to give it because it's already been addressed. So I want to talk about traffic. And I don't have anything really written down except that Cedar Heights is a private road, is not county maintained. Um, Spruce Road is, um, an artery off of Cedar Valley. Spruce Road is twelve foot wide at the place of entry where the mining trucks are going to be entering if indeed the reclamation proposal is accepted. Because there is a meeting in Prescott Valley where the state mine inspector is going to attend. And the first sentence of that meeting agenda says, this meeting is in order to study and accept, to accept or reject the proposal. So what the residents want to do is influence anyone who can be influenced and anyone who has a stake and is a stakeholder in this project to in fact reject the project. It's our town. Traffic will be affected in Chino Valley because, um, big trucks, as Ed mentioned, the tonnage of the trucks will be going through and using Chino Valley. Um, Road Five North, as a matter of fact, will be the direct route. Has been recently paved, um, from Reed to Yuma. It's been beautifully paved. Um, Yuma will be used to Cedar Heights, Cedar Heights, which is a county, um, not maintained by county, but by, maintained by us residents. That will be used, that is a dirt gravelled road. Recently, it has been reinforced by, um, a resident of Cedar Heights. Um, has been widened. But where the trucks are going to be entering the mining site. Okay, I'm sorry.
Next I have Randy Delbek.
Thank you, mayor, vice mayor, council members. Um, I'm here to talk on behalf of the Cedar Heights as well. Um, one of the problems that I foresee is if they have a missed blast there, we're going to have issues with our water because ammonium and the nitrates and everything that comes down out of that soil. Not to mention, my well's already seven hundred and forty feet. Um, we're running out of water, as you all know. Um, the other problem is the impacts of where it's at. You are bordering residential on all sides. We're all going to be essentially living inside of a mine site. It's all going to be full of silicates. You cannot control that dust twenty-four seven without water. When I worked up at the mine site up in Williams Red Lake for fan contracting, we used anywhere from eight to twelve four thousand gallon truckloads a day to do one shift. You're going to double that because they're going to be working at night as well, because that's what they want to do. Um, there, you're not going to be able to contain all that. It's, it's going to be, and the other problem with that is so that fugitive dust that's going to be leaving that site. Um, I, I went up there, uh, when I was working up there, um, you could go over to the juniper trees. Juniper trees were tan. You go over there and smack a juniper tree, and all those two hundred micron dust particles will fall out of there. It cannot be contained. Um, and it's couldn't be a worse place to put it. You know, I mean, nobody wants to work in a mine site, let alone live in a mine site twenty-four seven. Um, wildlife, I mean, like the, the woman earlier stated, we've got deer running through there, we've got squirrels, we've got everything you can think of, the wild boar. Um, it, it's, we even have cows that are in there. So you got, uh, Kimball is out there, they have cows. Um, but basically what I wanted to, to get down to was the environment is not a home environment. When I worked at the mine site, the first thing you do when you got home was strip your clothes before you went inside because you did not want that stuff in your house. You didn't want it, all that fine particulate, you didn't want to give it to your children. You didn't want to pass it on. You didn't want your dogs to have, you know, be in, into that. So, um, appreciate your time. I just, basically, it's, it's not an environment anybody wants to work in, let alone live in. Thank you, guys.
Mayor Miller, that is the only ones I had submitted, thank you.
If there's something new, yes, sir. You're next, and then that's it.
Okay, my name is Anthony Arton Passarelli. Um, my family's lived in the Cedar Heights area since ninety-four. Um, we were there with, when there were, you know, enough homes where you could count them on your hand. Um, so we watched the place grow, and it's really beautiful, and a lot of cool people have come through. Um, the really neat thing that I've noticed over the last thirty-some odd years is, uh, you know, every year we have, um, free landscapers that come wandering through our, our homes and our lands. Um, as we all live on the opposite side of the cattle guard and out in the county, we live in a free-range state. And, uh, the Kimbells and the Perkins, um, have been running cattle out here a lot longer than all of us have been here, you know? They've run a business that's made their family grow and establish this town. Um, when we spoke with the council member the other night, he sent us back a letter that he quoted, um, an Arizona statute eleven dash eight one two A two. And it's a restriction of where the county has no jurisdiction over anything to do with mining operations. And the state has restricted it. But they also include on the list, they prevent, restrict, or otherwise regulate the use or occupation of land or improvement of railroad, mining, metallurgical, grazing, or general agricultural purposes in the tract concerned for five or more commercial acres. That grazing operation's been there much longer. Is there some way that that somehow takes precedence? Because those cows come up and down that road every day. There's two sections of state land right there at the corner of Yuma, it's a diamond, you know? And then they come over the cattle garden, they walk up Yuma, they walk up Cedar Heights, they walk up every single road. You, you could look from above and there'd be cattle tracks everywhere up there. There's a cattle pond behind me, there's a cattle pond on Yuma. Somehow the BLM should be aware of this and have some understanding that those big trucks are going to be a danger to those cattle in that business. I've seen in the last six months at least three baby cattle dead on that road just from the inhabitants of the area. Those are thousands or tens of thousands of dollars worth of damages. Um, those cows won't be safe, that business won't be safe, we won't be safe. So, you know, anything that you can suggest to us, what's our next step? Who do we call in this state if no one in the town or the county can help us? Because this is our home, it's been here a long time. I want to stay here. Thank you so much for your time, peace and love.
One more and that's it.
Mayor, oh, I'm sorry, I did have one more late submission. We are currently at nineteen minutes for Call the Public.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Thank you for having us, Mr. Mayor, council. My name's Danny, and yes, I do live in the Cedar Heights area. In fact, um, my wife and I got our house up there four years ago. It's our retirement home. I retired from Southwest Gas in Las Vegas. And looking at what is going on in the last month, we have looked at the plot plan that we found online where they want to put their office, where they want to take the hill down behind our house. where they want to take the hill down behind our house, and where they want to put the rock crushing machine. Our property is right behind their property, and where they want to put the rock crushing machine is 213 feet away from my house. And that's very disturbing to us. I mean, no one would want anything that close to your house. So I just wanted to bring that up, um, like, uh, all of my neighbors, Kelly and Chuck live right next door. As same with them, you know, it's just, it's just, we can't believe we're in this spot right now. So we just want to ask for your guys' help. And, and if it's something that you need more help from the state, please reach out to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak. I'd like to talk about the company Rock Supply LLC themselves. And I would just like to inform everybody that I have been in contact with ADEQ and M Shaw to ask about the, their record, their mining history. They are a newly established company, and I'd just like to inform the people of Chino Valley that they're coming in here to learn how to mine. They have no history whatsoever of being environmentally conscious or conscious of the community. And you can tell that by the way this has been handled. We have been barred totally from having access to a mining plan. I have spent a week digging through laws, contacting everybody connected to this company. By law, state statute, they are supposed to have a community representative that we, the people of Cedar Heights, can contact with our questions. That man's name is James Cox, and he is refusing phone calls from people. Now, as for a history of how they treat our community, Annie, you've been up to my house, she married my parents for me one time. So, so you know that I've got a front row seat to this operation. And I spend a lot of time outside because I love being outside enjoying my property. This was, I've invested everything into Chino Valley. I'm young, this is everything I've got, and right now, I have nothing. I have hundreds of thousands of dollars of debt on a property that I cannot sell. But this company, if, if you search into this LLC, it all goes to an address, and they have done their due diligence, moving this property from one owner to the next within the same office. Okay, so they can abide by the laws to get away with this. But I would like to show you something. I have record of how they treat our community. And this might take a little bit more than three minutes to pull up, because I did not have it ready. All right. The original owner of this property hired a local excavation company to cut the road on the property that is the proposed mine site. Now, as far as I can tell, no permits from the county were drawn to cut that road. But I watched myself with my own two eyes, that company come up, cut that road, and dump it in the Arroyo across the street from my house. Okay, so this company is already dumping stuff in our water supply. And that's all I would like the people of Chino Valley to know. Thank you.
Ma'am, ma'am. Can I get you to state your name for the record, and then I'll have you fill out a comment card?
My name is Barbara Merriman.
Thank you. And the mayor, we just have the last one, Casey Jones Overs.
You have one more?
Yeah.
Okay.
Distinguished members of the council, I am not an ex-miner, and I have not had the time to go through and address all of the people that some of my friends here have been able to research on the, on the situation of the mine. What I am is probably one of the most liberal people in this room, and young enough that some people might refer to me as a whippersnapper. That being said, I am here to ask for your help. So many people in this room are. We are lost between all of the laws and all of the representations that they have that we simply can't unravel. We are asking for you to do the thing that we elected you to do, to represent us, to be our voice, to look into this situation. My family lives on Four and a Half North. I have a grandfather, a special needs brother. My child just recently moved out, and we all have breathing issues that we have to worry about. We have animals that we are afraid will be affected by the blasting and the, the rumbling of the big, large vehicles that will be going down our road. How will it affect our water? How will it affect our families? How will it affect my chosen family that lives at Cedar Heights that I care very, very much about? I am scared, and I am asking that you protect us. The view is that many of you do not care, and I feel that it is only fair to let you know that that is the feeling, is that you have washed your hands of this situation simply because it is outside of the boundaries of Chino Valley. You can shake your head, but it is only fair that I let you know that that is the viewpoint. If that is incorrect, I ask that, moving forward, that we are able to hear your voices, that we are able to see the work that you're doing behind that podium that you sit at. Please, please help us.
Okay, moving on. Current events summaries and reports, uh, reports by mayor and council regarding current events. I'd like, you gonna put that up there? There you go. Uh, I wrote this letter to Cindy on the vice mayor's, on my behalf, Cindy Blackmore. I just said, I wanted to take a moment to recognize her employees responsible for putting on the territorial days and the 9/11 memorial this morning. Your staff has gone above and beyond the normal to make these celebrations a huge success. The parade flow for the council was amazing, Memory Park was spectacular, along with the car show with the fireworks on Sunday. Not to forget mentioning the 9/11 memorial, where I witnessed the parks director taking down chairs. I know this is part of their job, and they are paid for it, but to give up a weekend and to have to work in the heat, rain, and sun on a holiday weekend may seem like too much to give up for your job. But what impressed me the most was the fact that they did it all with smiles on their faces. Not just towards me, but watching from afar, I saw the same gestures to everyone they met. We have an outstanding staff that is dedicated to the town and their citizens, and it makes me very proud to see the positive interaction with them. Please place this letter of commendation to their files and pass along a huge thank you from myself, Vice Mayor Grinell, and the council. And that's all I have, down here, shirt? Don't.
Yep.
Forgot your name, John. Gosh, Bob? Sin, Eric, what's your name?
Annie.
Whoever she is.
Whoever. Um, I just wanted to thank everybody again, uh, that was part of territorial days, and specifically on my heart, the 9/11 memorial yesterday. Thank everyone, the townspeople and our community residents for coming out and being supportive. And I think it was an amazing success. And that is all I have, thank you.
Eric? Nope, you said it all. Thank you. Mrs. Blackmore?
Thank you, Mayor, council members, and I want to say thank you for taking the time to recognize the staff. They did work super hard, and, um, I know it is in Cindy's plan to continue to make that our signature event, to make it bigger and better every year. I don't know how we're going to top what we did this year, but, and we're sure going to work hard to make that a great event and family-friendly for everyone to come out to. So again, thank you for the recognition. Um, just a couple of announcements. This Saturday, the 16th, we are welcoming, wel, bah, excuse me, we're welcoming the Chino Valley Grinder Event. Again, so this is, um, the longest-running gravel grinder. It started in 2014. So we're going to be welcoming, welcoming a lot of cyclists, so it should be a great event for all of the cycling enthusiasts visiting our town. Also, um, September 16th, this Saturday, we have our fifth annual Hawaiian luau put on by our, um, Chino Valley Police Foundation. So if you'd like to come out and support the foundation, it's from four to seven at Memory Park. Also want to make mention of, um, our Chino Valley's annual event going on at Memory Park. Come out for our National Night Out, a chance for us all to get together and be with our neighbors and our police officers. It's Tuesday, October 3rd, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. It's going to be a great event. We actually have Frank Ray, who is a upcoming country artist. So a lot going on that night, and it's a really great event. So, um, we invite everyone to come out and be part of that. And that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Would anyone like to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove 5A, please.
5A, anything else?
Excuse me?
5B? Okay, so that's all of it. So. Who did a Bob, you're up for a consideration and possible action to award a professional service agreement to MTO Janitorial LLC for Town Hall Police Department Cleaning Services in the amount of $5,500 per month?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this item was actually on consent agenda, was pulled for clarification, uh, during the contractual process and the writing of the scope of services that MTO Janitorial was going to provide. There was some verbiage that was left off and not really clear, and it was in regards to the bathroom cleaning. So where it said, uh, normal cleaning throughout the week on both the Town Hall and the PD facility, it didn't specifically mention the bathrooms would be cleaned. However, we clarified that it was going to be cleaned on a daily basis. Obviously, that would be horrible if it wasn't, so we're grateful for that. But it was changed, and I believe you guys all have a copy of the updated process of it. Um, so they, in fact, confirmed that, and that was their, their goal was the daily services that would be included, but we had them write in the verbiage for it, so.
Thank you.
Um, and we'd like, you know, for approval of the contract as it stands, so we can start cleaning the building. I can answer any questions if you have any.
Anything else, anybody?
Well, that was easy, come on.
I mean, there's like a mop at Dollar Tree if you want to get started right away.
I've been cleaning upstairs, it's, yeah.
Okay, make a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the professional services agreement to MTO Janitorial for cleaning services in the amount of $5,500 per month with the amended scope of work dated 9/11/2023.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item 5B, consideration and possible action to approve a second amendment to the professional services agreement with EHS Support LLC.
I asked for this because I needed, I wanted to learn some, what the town, the letter of deficiency that we received from ADWR, and then what were the protocols to establish remedy for that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, back in front of you again. Thank you, Councilmember Cafferty. Um, so if I can indulge you a little history, this actually started in 2020, uh, before some of you joined the council. I can just very quickly go through a little history. This has been a long time coming, we're this close, I, I think, to completing this work. So I think the history will help explain and also cover the notice of deficiencies. We're on the third one now from the Department of Water Resources. So this started in January of 2020. Uh, Chino Valley approved a scope of work with EHS to complete a Phase One work plan for the renewal of the Wineglass Ranch. This is our big Chino water ranch. Physical availability determination, I refer to that as a PAD, and, um, using the NARGFOM, the Northern Arizona Regional Groundwater Flow Model. I know I'm all full of acronyms, I hate using them, but, um, that was a model the Department of Water Resources indicated from the very beginning, we have to use that. You shall use that model. And it was the first, we were the first entity to actually utilize that model with a consulting firm and move forward with the physical availability determination. Um, just want to point out a couple of things. Um, on November of 2020, after we developed that scope, and, and we developed the scope fee and schedule um, for the EH, EHS to the next phase of work, which actually was using the NARGFOM model in Phase Two and Phase Three, which was a development of, it's actually three models. You have the original NARGFOM model, which the Department of Water Resources and the USGS developed from 1905 to 2005. EHS had to actually get the model up to date to 2021, and then we had to do the 100-year projected model to show the 100-year supply of water for the physical availability. So that was from 2021 to 2121. So there's three NARGFOM models. And so, um, that's what they had developed, get the model up to date, and then actually, um, go and do the 100-year projection. But on a, on a positive note, if you recall, we actually signed an agreement with the Nature Conservancy. They wanted their hands on a DWR peer-reviewed, um, NARGFOM model so they could run their own scenarios, uh, regarding the Verde River, any development or future irrigation out in the Big Chino. So we partnered on a 50/50 cost share. So they paid of that original cost of $153,000, they paid $75,000 in the form of a grant. So that was actually a really good bargain. They needed it, we needed it, we, we found common ground. So we moved forward, and, um, in June 2021, EHS completed the modeling effort, all the reports. We had a pre-conference call with DWR to ensure that we wouldn't get a notice of deficiency by trying to cover everything with them. We did not want to get a deficiency, especially with this, the first time using the NARGFOM model. However, in October of 2021, Chino Valley, um, we submitted our, our physical availability determination with, with, uh, DWR. And soon thereafter, on May 10th of 2022, ADWR issued a first notice of deficiency. And the deficiency really stated this. They didn't want to have three models, they wanted to have the whole model from 1905 up to 2121 combined into one model. We asked, they kept referring to policy and rule. We kept asking, where is this policy, where is this rule? And they said, well, I guess there really isn't a rule and policy, it's just a way we've always done business. So soon thereafter, we had Bill Stoudamire, our water, uh, rights attorney, draft a letter saying that they, we felt they were overreaching for rule and policy on a simple physical availability determination utilizing this very complex model. So, uh, we were successful. They actually rescinded their request and said, okay, we're going to acknowledge that the original model, we're just going to let the output be what it is, and we agreed in that meeting, the model output is what it is, and then we'll get it up to date to 2021, and then the 100-year projection. So we thought we had made progress. However, we had a deficiency too, which I came before you, that was in, uh, January of 2023 of this year, which they had, uh, reviewed further, the reports, the modeling data files, and they wanted all of that reconfigured so their modeling team and their, their technicians could review this in a format that was more convenient for them. So I came before you, asked for an additional $10,000. You approved that, that was amendment one, to have all that additional work, change all the figures, change all the tables to meet how the Department of Water Resources wanted that information. We successfully did that. However, we recently had a notice of, a notice of, 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 uh, of deficiency number three issued, and that was issued in July of this year. And what they're now requiring us, after we thought we had an agreement with them for not touching the 2005 to, to, to 2000, I'm sorry, 1905 to 2005 model, the original model that is very challenging, that we were just going to accept the output, they wanted us to go in and extrapolate all of the existing inadequate, adequate, and assured water supplies from it, and extrapolate that out in all of those additional models forward. Versus just taking the output, what it is, with the new assured water supplies and our updated model in the future. So we had quite a conversation with them. Um, I think we have, um, exactly, this is going to require the EHS support to actually go back, there's 36 lands or wells that have to be then grabbed from that historic model and input into the two additional models, the 2005 to 2021, and then the 100-year projection model. So it's going to require all that information to be input in the model. The model have, the models have to be rerun, and then there has to be the update of the reports, the data tables, and all the figures. So that has a new cost, um, and what I'm here before you is an additional $10,000 for that additional work. However, I do want to leave you with one disturbing note. On, on, this is, on our phone call, we had a virtual meeting. I think you'll find it interesting, we're probably going to follow up with them, but it's really important. So at the original start of this process, we, they told us, the, uh, their chief attorney told us, you shall use this model, and any and all work for Northern Arizona Water Resource Managers that will deal with adequate water supplies, inadequate water supplies, or assured water supplies, and that's not today, that's new AMAs that may be created in Northern Arizona in the future, whatever that looks like, you shall use NARGFOM. And we took that to heart, we had no other choice. But in our phone meeting with the Department of Water Resources, they said, we hate the fact that you're using this model for an assured water supply, because we don't use this model for assured water supplies. And I said, well, you, you are the department that forced us to use this, we had no choice. And they said, we never forced you to use it. So fortunately, we had a four-page letter by Ken Slawinski, their DWR chief counsel, before he retired. He issued that letter to the town, and, and even states in there that I had asked for reconsideration to the director level, please don't use this model, we want to create our own model. And Tom Buschowski, the director- And Tom Buschowski, the director still and back then, said, denied. You shall use NARGFOM and all future going forward. But what's disturbing about this is we are the first to get this model updated at great expense. Thank goodness we had a financial partner. That's been a, a great, a help for us to get these, this ball rolling. This is a very big effort. But it signals that there's a lack of consistency, consistency with the Department of Water Resources. But more importantly, there's other work that's going to go on the Big Chino, and I really think that if we're going to use this model, that all others shall use this model going forward. Um, because right now there's about three other models out there that exist. So I think once our, our physical availability termination is issued by the department, um, which I think will be soon thereafter, if we move forward with this, um, we want to probably follow up with the department on this issue because it was a bit disturbing that they did not even have the letter in hand from their own chief counsel. So with that, um, I would recommend approval of that, and I'd happy to address any other questions you may have on this. Um, this, this definitely, um, it will say that is a substantial increase of the budget. Uh, but again, the town is with a partnership that seventy-five thousand was paid by the Nature Conservancy.
Are you pretty confident this will be where at the end?
So Bill Stoudamire and their current, uh, attorney, um, her name is, pardon me, her last name, I can't remember, but Emily. She is their, their now, uh, uh, council, that attorney overseeing this assured water supply section. They have got concurrence. If we meet what they want us to do, we know what we need to do, we submit that, there will be no further deficiencies. We should have everything set according to all of those at hand. The attorneys agree. I think we're going to be in a good place. That will be in agreement.
And then, at that point, we would be issued a permit, should the time be, we could actually draw, uh, import from there?
Yes, um, we would show physical availability for a hundred years. Just one last fact, this model is also being used. Once it's modified and approved by DWR, as I mentioned, we're working on the mitigation model. This is the model we'll use for mitigation work.
All right, I really appreciate that detailed report.
Anything else?
Mark, do we have that in writing?
We do.
Okay.
We do.
Solid.
We have Bill Stoudamire email correspondence with their attorney in writing. Yes.
Thank you.
We concur. Thank you so much for your time.
Anything else over here?
Nope.
How about over here?
Make sure you had some. No, oh, no.
Okay. Entertain motion.
Make a, make a motion to approve the second amendment to the professional service agreement with EHS Support LLC for the pad at Wineglass Ranch.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Action items, uh, public hearing, consideration, possible action regarding the application from Agent Anita Martinez, Family Dollar LLC, number two, four, one, five, one, for a new series ten liquor license.
Hello, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. If I seem nervous, I am not. I'm frozen. Sarah Burchill, deputy town clerk. On July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, the town clerk's office received notice that applicant Anita Martinez had applied with the state for a series ten liquor license for the sale of beer and wine at the Family Dollar located at three, one, four Business Park Drive, Chino Valley. A representative for Family Dollar is available via Zoom to answer any questions the council may have. The police, planning, and fire departments have reviewed the application and recommended approval with no comments. Staff posted the establishment with the necessary notices to meet the twenty, the required twenty-day period from August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three to September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. To date, staff has not received any written arguments in favor of or in opposition to the requested license. Upon reviewing the material provided by the Department of Liquor License and Control and conducting a public hearing, the council may recommend to the state liquor board to grant or deny license or vote to make no recommendation. Open it to you for questions.
Any questions?
I have a question. Uh, they've been suspended four different times over four years. Do you have any, um, knowledge of why?
I do not.
I would, uh, direct that question probably to the gentleman that's on Zoom. He can probably answer that. This guy.
This guy?
Yep, that guy.
Well, let's wait, let's finish up with staff before we go to him, okay? Anything for staff? I'm pointing to you, Annie.
Oh, no, thank you.
No. Nope. All right, now I'll go with your questions for the applicant.
Oh, okay. So your company has been suspended four different times over four years, just for, uh, several days at a time. That's one question. And, uh, what kind of training are you going to be giving to people to sell alcohol?
Uh, those are great questions, and when you say four different times, are you talking statewide?
No.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
You got, uh, let's see, two in Texas, one in Virginia. We got three in Texas and one in Virginia.
Yes, okay.
Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one.
Yes, so yeah, that, that's, thank you for clarifying which state you're talking about. I was not aware of any in Arizona, so thank you for that. Um, first, thank you for your time, and, and I am Jonathan Crumley. I'm a consultant for Family Dollar. We have been filing applications for them in forty different states for about two years now. Um, we have filed, our company has filed over two thousand applications and received nine hundred from various jurisdictions. I can tell you from the data we've obtained from Family Dollar, um, you know, the rate of violation for their stores nationwide is a less than one percent. Family Dollar currently has approximately fifteen hundred stores that are licensed to sell beer and wine off premises. Um, and so, yes, there are times when some of the training doesn't stick. To usually in, in our instances, it's, it's where there's a high rate of turnover at a particular store. Um, so the, sometimes there are gaps in training, but the company does have a nationwide policy that regardless of the jurisdictional requirements, everybody in the store will receive internal training on responsible selling. And it is a training that's comparable to the nationally recognized program known as TIPS, T-I-P-S. And it's about a two-hour program that covers everything related to responsible selling from how to ID people, how to verify ID, how to use the in-store register scanners to confirm it's proper ID, the right of any salesperson to deny selling if the purchaser appears intoxicated. Uh, and the company does nationwide have a zero tolerance policy for sales to underage persons. And, and as you noted, Mr. Councilmember, it's not a hundred percent perfect, but with a company of this size, I think four violations over four years, um, amongst thousands of stores is, is a fairly high level of responsibility and certainly evidence that they do take this very seriously.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant over here? Annie or? How about down here? Nope. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're going to declare a public meeting to be open to hear from any public. Is there any public that would like to have any input? Come up? Please state your name again.
My name is Kelly Turner. I live, I live in Cedar Heights. And if this deal goes through, our property value will be nil. Our property value right now is, that's pretty good. I mean, if we wanted to sell.
I'm sorry, ma'am, are you, are you dressing the, the?
I'm, I'm dressing the mining thing.
Yeah, the mines, we're done with the mines.
Okay, okay.
Sorry. Anybody else like to address a liquor license? Not seeing anyone. We're going to close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want discussion?
Yes.
Okay, go.
I personally don't see, uh, the need in our community for another beer and wine store. Doesn't mean that they're not entitled to it if we agree to it. Um, I'm just wondering if this is a good idea or not at Family Dollar. Honestly, legally, I might not have a leg to stand on to say that I'm opposed to this, but I, I really don't think it's a good idea.
Any other discussion?
Do any other Family Dollar stores here in Chino Valley have liquor licensing, sir?
In Chino Valley, I, I believe this is the only Family Dollar in Chino Valley.
The other ones.
Dollar General. Yeah, there's a Dollar General and a Dollar Tree, which are different from Family Dollar.
Right.
Are you talking?
The liquor barn, yeah.
Exited dentist across from the liquor.
Across from the liquor barn.
Yeah.
Any other? Now, can we do a motion? Anything else, Annie?
No.
Got it myself. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve a new series ten liquor license for Family Dollar LLC store two, four, one, five, one.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Nay. Two nays. Did you get those? Okay. Uh, Sherri?
I make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we adjourn. Thank you all.
Oh, yeah, I'm missing out on the joke here.